Let's all reach hands to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to turn over to Superintendent for the recognition of the Falcons of the Month.
Great. So, thank you everybody for coming. This is our favorite part of the night. It's at the beginning of our meeting when we do this and we're doing this month to month this year. Tonight, we have the distinction of honoring our next group of Falcons of the Month. Each school in our district celebrates numerous students each and every month for simply being outstanding. We have asked our schools to select one individual from the many honored to represent the group. Therefore, the students we will be honoring tonight were selected because they personified the trait or characteristic being celebrated this month. In other words, these students represent the best of the best this month. The certificate each student will receive, I'm going to read to you. It says the following. Whereas the philosophy of education in the Niagara Wheatfield Central School District calls for aiding all students in the development and achievement of their potential. And whereas the primary goals of the school district include encouraging each student to develop a sense of values, instill a feeling of responsibility to self and others, as well as an appreciation of good citizenship. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Niagara Wheatfield Central School District hereby recognizes. And we're going to start tonight with Jillian Davies. Jillian, if you could come on up. What we're going to do, each Falcon of the Month who comes up, we're going to ask to walk along and shake hand with each member here at the table, okay? Congratulations. Congratulations. Next, we have Ava Wallace. Ava? Come on home. Next, we have Evangeline Spagnolo. Next, we have Madison Chapman. Madison. Next up, we have Veda Harris. Next, we have Carmen Metro. I would just ask for one more round of applause for all of our Falcon winners. Saber, if you want to.
We will recess until seven thirty. Please join us for some cake and our. Lunchtime and breakfast or some league is back there, so. We recess till seven thirty.
All right, a call for motion to accept the consensus agenda items as submitted. I'll second. Just one thing to point out from our accepted donations tonight. From Linda McClure is a book, West Street Elementary, nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and six, being donated to West Street School, the memory book from that time period. Board members, make sure you take a look at that before we leave tonight. All right, all those in favor then, please say aye. Aye. Posits are stating. Motion carries. Call for motion to accept the personality report as submitted. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Posits are stating. Motion carries. All right, fundraiser informational item and internal claims audit report there. Ex officious student members report.
So, indoor track, like it was a new sport on in our roster for winter sports is going very well. Everyone's kind of enjoying it. It's like a pretty able to outdoor track, so everybody's kind of getting geared up for that season too. The sophomores will be shadowing at Bosse's on Friday. That'll be a fun field trip. I'm going to, I'm going to be one of them there to help chat around.
Oh, nice.
We're also having a scarfing glove drive from now until twenty-second. We also have a Christmas spirit week that's going to be starting this upcoming Monday and being on Friday leading into Christmas and. We are planning more Christmas themed events after school this upcoming week. The student council maybe has had, guess those aren't a hundred percent, but it sounds like we're having booby night, is what I understand. Yeah, happy holidays since the last time I'll be seeing you until next year.
All right, just one thing from my report, I tried Frozen Junior, absolutely phenomenal. It was sad to talk about it though as being the last middle school musical and the odd as we know the odd right now. So, the next middle school musical that's held in there will be on the new stage and new odd and, you know, hopefully we fill it to make the capacity for that first show. So, but absolutely phenomenal, the performers are great, you know. The crew phenomenal also and everything that they did, so. Good job. All right, Dan, your report.
You stole my thunder on that one. I say this every year, if you've never attended one of our middle school musicals, you need to come and attend one of the middle school musicals. You'll walk out saying there's no way those were middle school students. And that is such a tribute to the kids, to their families, the time getting them there, to the, you know, our staff who do such a great job with them. Steve mentioned the crew, the stage crew. It's amazing what they do to make everything go off without a hitch. So, congratulations to that entire group. They just, they did some awesome work. The costumes were phenomenal, so.
There's definitely Huga.
Huga. That's right. The. Board recognition dinner we're going to do in January. The, Steve, you want to, if you could just make a note, the Sard dinner is May twenty-third. To take a look when you get closer to check that date.
Yeah, just, just so the board knows, it's always up in the air with the things going on. If I'm able to attend. I've had other board members, I know Bob, you've attended in the past for me, I know John has, I think Rick did one year. It usually falls on a night that I'm coaching, so. You know, if everyone can sort of save the date. So, did you attend one year? So, you know, just keep that open because if I, odds are, that's right in, you know, towards the other stuff, yeah. Please, you know, just keep it eye open for that, that date.
There was a, it's still tentative, but there was a move in the day for the Nozma Legislative Breakfast. So, just adjust your calendars for tentative. Those things can be January twentieth, okay? I just want to mention this school community, I will put out a little video announcement after we come back from the recess. But April first is the date that the construction will begin on the auditorium. Things are going to look a lot different around here, the last couple of months of this school year and for most, if not all of the following school year. Okay, so it's a huge project. It's going to change our traffic flow. It's going to. All of those things are going to be interrupted and we have a plan in place. We just want to make sure that everybody knows that that's coming. We'll give everybody plenty of forewarning. Make sure everyone understands with maps and that sort of thing, what will change as far as traffic flow. But I think the sooner and the more often we get that message out there, the better. I think, you know, most people know because it was an item that was voted on and it was certainly a big part of this capital project and we're really excited about it, but it's a project that's going to take about a year and a half. Policy committee, I know Julie's not here today, but policy just came in today that is in align with a new law in New York State that has to do with workplace violence prevention. You have to have a policy statement. School districts and other governmental agencies have to have a policy statement in place and they actually have to have a policy, so. If that's effective, I want to say January fourth. We're going to make sure everything that's in the policy is in play procedurally by January fourth. But we won't obviously be able to act on this until the first meeting in January. This just came to us today. So, I certainly wasn't going to throw a policy in our policy committee at about two o'clock today and say, hey, you know, how about you prove this is under it back. We don't like to do that. So, plan will be to get this in place at the first meeting in January, okay? And then if I could just echo Ben's sentiments, happy holidays to everybody, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. It's, it's obviously a great time of year. I will say if in the, along the wall over there, there are boxes filled with things for families, who many of which will be coming as early as tomorrow to pick up foodstuffs for them, for their, for the holidays, for some families who requested that and who are in need. I just want to thank all of our staff who donate to that cause, also to Kara Kirk and the Family Support Center and the work that she and really a lot of our counselors and social workers in the district do to pull that event off. Oh, and also, one last thing, Mr. Azarella, his classes, I saw them in here the other day. I was here for an OHC meeting and his students who are helping pack a lot of those boxes and getting that stuff ready, so that was pretty neat. That's all I have.
Any questions to Superintendent's report? All right. Any items for board discussion? All right, any old business? Any new business? Any public people here? Board member comments?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate about that, Frozen, the musical. I took my two granddaughters to it and I would encourage anybody that has kids in the grade schools to actually have them come out and see that because it puts it in their head, my two granddaughters are really thinking about, they want to do that going forward, so. Great musical. Definitely was an inspiration to them, so.
And if you guys didn't, like when we said Huga, if you guys didn't know what that is, in the musical, it's a Norwegian statement for contentment. You know, so everything's content to them and everything, so it was, it was big. In the Broadway musical, what happens in it, the song Huga, there is a spa, like a natural recurring spa, and all of a sudden, there's about fifty people that come out of it. But it's just a little hot, so that's the joke about it. It's, everyone's Huga, even though there's a big crowded thing, everyone's happy and stuff, so. They didn't do that here, but it was, it was still, it was still pretty funny, so. Any other board member comments? Just happy, happy holidays to everyone and to all of you. Make sure you stay safe over the New Year's Eve time, please, and we'll see everyone next year. Yeah, I, it's, I can't believe we're already into the year that we're going to be changing the whole odd around. I mean, it just seemed like we just started to start planning that and here we are heading into that, you know, that piece and the tennis court's going in already in the back. I mean, that's.
Yeah, that's going to look really nice.
Yeah, Mike was playing in the mud back there, so. Other than that, we will, we will call for motion to. Other than that, we will, we will call for motion to adjourn on that note.
I'll make a motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.